We'll start by reconvening the January 12th meeting since we recessed it. The only thing left on that would have been the executive session items, which will take up an executive session tonight. I would make a motion to adjourn the January 12th meeting.
Second.
Darren, when you're ready.
So we have a motion that's been made and seconded to adjourn the January meeting. Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciosi?
Yes.
Ms. Ert?
Yes.
That'll bring us to tonight's meeting. I'll call it to order. We'll have a moment of silence, followed by, or with a personal reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Darren, if you'll take the roll call.
Yep, I've got, I've got to get out of one meeting and into another, so just give me a second, please. Mr. Fuji?
Here.
Mrs. Nix?
Here.
Mrs. Graciosi?
Here.
Mr. Crowell?
Here. Or to approve the minutes from the January 12th organizational meeting. Anybody have any questions on that? Darren, when you're ready.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciosi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
And item five is recognitions, and Angela, it looks like you're up first.
Welcome. Welcome, sir. It is my pleasure to share with Big Walnut Elementary School recognizes Kai Lin Smith, is that how we say your name, Kai? Okay, as the district student of the month for February 2023. Kai is a fourth grade student at BWE. He is the son of Kelly Lin Smith and Deanna McCauley. Kai's kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Horman, said, "Kai always does the right thing, even when no one is looking. He is the true definition of kindness. Kai is always helpful and considerate of others. He exhibits leadership qualities and inspires others to do the same." Your first grade teacher, Mrs. Eastep, said, "Kai is a remarkable student with a true caring heart. He is always willing to lend a helping hand and is always a positive role model for everyone in our school. His smile is contagious. He is an exceptionally kind friend, and his hard work and dedication to his learning is evident in the classroom every single day. Keep leading by example," she says. Kai's second grade teacher, Mrs. Zarillo, said, "Kai, I am so proud of you. You are a shining star. You are a true example of a hard worker and a good friend. Thank you for making a difference at BWE." Can you believe they're saying this about you? Kai's third grade teacher, Mrs. Cavallaro, said, "Kai is one of those truly amazing students that makes his classroom a better place. He is a quiet leader, a positive role model, and he has a truly kind heart. Kai's desire to learn and improve is evident each and every day through his hard work and never give up attitude. Kai, you're destined for great things, and our world is a better place to have you in it." And your current teacher, Mrs. Garrard, says, "We are so lucky to have Kai as a member of our classroom community. Kai's can-do attitude helps him persevere through even the most difficult tasks. Ask him about how long division and multi-digit multiplication is. Also, he has the most caring heart and is a friend to all. Kai leads quietly by example, and I know I can count on him to always do the right thing. Kai, thank you so much for all you do to make our school and world a better place. I am proud of you, and I am so happy that you are being recognized for all of your hard work. We are excited to celebrate Kai as our student of the month. He is deserving, he is well-deserving of this honor." And we will, that is from Lauren Hightkamp, your principal. So, we have a few things I've heard about you. You have a sibling, Lennon? Yep, and tell me what your favorite hobbies are.
Playing with my friends, playing with my brother, and then playing sports.
Playing sports? And your favorite subject in school?
Math.
Awesome. Do you like long division?
Hmm, it's okay.
I know. And your favorite part about being at BWE?
All the friends, all my friends and the nice people there.
Oh, that's awesome. And are you going to miss it?
Yeah.
Yeah. What are your most, what are your most excited about going on to BWI?
Have to be like more kids and making more friends and...
Yeah, that's what you said. Said, "I know, you know some friends from sports. It'll be cool to be in a school." Yeah, that's right, you're going to get to like see the collective group of friends come in. That's going to be fun. And what do you want to do when you grow up?
I want to be a zookeeper.
Woo, all right, you've got a program for that. What do you look up to the most? Who do you look up to the most?
My family.
Awesome. And what is something most people do not know about you?
Like, I can raise one eyebrow.
All right, do it. Give us the rock. Well, thank you very much. And do you have anything you'd like to say to your fans, to everyone who's going to see this on YouTube or whoever?
No.
Is that a parting word? No? All right. Quiet leader, thank you. And I have a little, a word for you. There you go. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Danielle Maynard from the Big Walnut High School. Hello, congratulations. So this is Danielle Maynard. She's student of the month for Big Walnut High School. You're a senior. You're the daughter of Mitchell and Christine Maynard. She has a younger sister, Julie, who's a freshman at the high school. It says you're currently undecided for college. Yeah, do you know what you want to study?
Materials engineering.
Excellent.
Or chemical.
Yeah. Are there any schools that you're like really got your eye on, you just haven't decided on the one?
There's a lot.
Yeah, a lot? Too many to...
Oh, a lot in Ohio, a lot out of Ohio, just a lot.
Yeah. Well, Danielle has participated on both the golf and the bowling teams for all four years of high school. You were selected the Ohio Capital Conference First Team in golf in the fall, and you were named a Scholar-Athlete for both the OCC and the Central District in golf. You are currently ranked 15th in the OCC with a bowling average of 138.4. Is that right?
I didn't know I was that high. Higher than I would expect.
You're a member of the new Alpha Theta Math Honor Society, National Honor Society, the United Voices Club, and you're acting treasurer of the Spanish Club, so very involved. This past summer, you organized and conducted a golf program that prepared six to ninth grade girls to play on the golf teams at both the middle and high school levels. That's pretty awesome. It says you were inspired to do this by the Girl Scouts Gold Award Initiative, so you've been in scouts throughout your, throughout your life? Yeah, that's excellent. See some of your leaders back there? So Danielle's teachers made the following statements about her. Danielle Maynard is very respectful and responsible. She is a team player and always, always helps those around her. She is academically superior and on top of that, a hard worker. She represents Big Walnut in the best way and strives for excellence. Another teacher says, "Danielle is just an all-around good person who just happens to be crazy smart." Danielle is a great choice for the Student of the Month award. She's driven, she's a driven, dedicated student that really puts her heart into learning. Another teacher says, "What an amazing young lady. She's as humble as she is bright. Her work ethic is second to none and exemplifies what a self-learner is. She is a very quiet leader who is genuinely kind to everyone." And finally, Danielle is one of the rare students who is truly intrinsically motivated to learn and grow. She is an outstanding young lady, great choice. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll give you this, and then we'll give you this award. And then they'll have pictures with your family, too, once. Next, we have Lily McIntyre. Let's move out here so everybody can see you. And I'm going to give you this, so you can hold it up. Lily is the, being recognized as the Art Student of the Month for Big Walnut Elementary, and she is also, the local schools hereby recognizes this outstanding achievement. Your hard work and dedication reflects great credit upon yourself, the Big Walnut Local School District, and the entire Big Walnut community. Tell us a little bit about your artwork.
You're awful this. I made it because I love nature so much, and I kind of draw, I drew flowers and then, like, it's a night sky during the nighttime with the full moon.
Would you like to read your message at the bottom?
My artwork is about, I love exploring and being in nature so much, and it makes me very happy to draw nature.
I think it would be really nice if you would let Mr. McLean have that to put up in the board office, and he will return it, I'm certain, before you graduate from Big Walnut Elementary. Going into intermediate school, you're in the fourth grade, correct?
Yes.
Tell me about your feelings going over to the intermediate school.
I'm excited, especially because my friend Tori, she goes to another district that's in the same Big Walnut, it's a different school, so she'll be in intermediate next year.
Well, that, that is exciting. So she's either at Souders, or PRE, or GRE. That, that's great, because you do all unite when you get to the intermediate school. Congratulations. I'm going to give you this certificate, and I actually have a plastic folder to put this in to protect it from the rain, so we'll take good care of it. Congratulations.
Theodore is, Theodore is the Big Walnut High School Art Student of the Month. I find this pretty interesting, because those, that's kind of a diagram like the early 1970s. How'd you come up with it?
How did I come up with it?
Yeah. Is it computer-driven?
Yeah, we did it on an iPad, and we were just kind of experimenting, and this was our first project, so, the symmetry stuff.
Inkjet, bubble jet. It's almost as if it was printed on there with a...
Oh, yeah.
Litho machine. Theodore, for being named Art Student of the Month, the Big Walnut Local Schools hereby recognizes the outstanding achievement. Your hard work and dedication reflects the great credit upon yourself, the Big Walnut Local School District, and the entire Big Walnut community. What do you think about that?
It's awesome.
Awesome. You can have this, I believe we want to hold on to that. Got anything you want to say?
I just want to say thank you to Ms. Shaw for choosing me for this award and supporting me through the last two years.
Well, thank you. Who wants to take care of this?
There's a classic cover that you did in Brian.
Guess I could have walked around the other way, right?
So, our students who are recognized, you are free to head out. Mr. Lindscott in the back, he'll, he'll grab a picture. You're welcome to stay, I don't want to chase anyone out. I know my superintendent reports are just riveting, so, thank you for coming.
Take us to item number six, superintendent's report. Ryan?
I want to start out by thanking everyone, our bus drivers, staff, families, and students for adjusting to the bus routing change we made a few weeks ago. Although there were a few hiccups, I believe it is working out the way we had hoped. Next week is FFA Week, and I know our students at the high school have worked with Mr. Jados on different ways to promote and celebrate the week and the FFA program. Yesterday was School Resource Officer Day, and I want to make sure I publicly recognize Deputy Snyder from the Delaware County Sheriff's Office and Officer Whiteside from the Sunbury Police Department. They do a great job working with our kids and exemplify what that position, SRO, is truly about. I think that's a perfect segue to one of the business items I want to draw your attention to this evening. Item 10.4 on this evening's agenda, you will see a recommendation to approve a full-time SRO in partnership with the Sunbury Police Department. Officer Whiteside has been serving our district in a part-time capacity for the past year, and should you approve it, we look forward to having him full-time. We continue to work through the process with the Delaware County Sheriff's Office to add an additional SRO through them, which is likely to begin in the 23-24 school year. We are very fortunate to have great partnerships with both organizations. I cannot say enough great things about the city of Sunbury and the Delaware County Sheriff's Office. The other item I want to mention here is item 11.8, which will increase the pay of substitute teachers to $150 a day, beginning March 1st. This has been something that has been addressed as a concern at multiple board meetings. I have been aware of this, and as I said at last month's board meeting, it's not as simple as just increasing the pay. That money has to come from somewhere, either an increase in taxes or eliminating other expenditures. We've been doing the latter when we can. As a result of that and some other increases in funding, I am happy to say we are at a point where we can address this issue. Speaking of other funding sources, the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission created a grant program for schools last year, the year before, and I am happy to report that we have received just under $350,000 to use for many of our buildings. This will be very useful as we look to further improve the safety and security of our buildings for our students. the safety and security of our buildings for our students and our staff. Since we are talking about facilities, I wanted to point out we have approximately $1.4 million each year from our Permanent Improvement Fund. That sounds like a large amount of money, but I can assure you the maintenance and repair needs of this district far exceed that amount. As a team, we prioritize what we believe are the most pressing needs and then make decisions accordingly. At last month's meeting, I recommended that our Facilities Ad-Hoc Committee reconvene to discuss the different options to handle our enrollment growth. We have done so. The biggest obstacle in addressing this is money. I don't want to sound like a broken record or sound like I'm whining, but the fact of the matter is, all of these options cost money, some more significantly than others. Everyone is aware our district is growing. You don't have to drive around very far to see the houses that are popping up. Years ago, a plan was developed that would redistrict the elementary school boundaries. K through four teachers would be pulled from around the district to open a new elementary school at the old Intermediate Building, 105 Baughman Street. And for some of you, you know that as the old, old high school. Full transparency here, I used to be the principal in that building. It wasn't in good shape then. It's not any better now, just being honest. But by implementing this redistricting plan, it would open up additional, it would open up an additional elementary school as well as free up space at each existing elementary building. If we were to renovate that building like we did the current middle school, the old high school, the cost would have been approximately $15 million, 1-5. I believe we were not being very aggressive with that price. In order to make just the necessary repairs to get that building open, we were looking at approximately $3 million. As I mentioned earlier, our entire budget for maintenance and building repairs for the entire district is about $1.4 million per year. So we started looking at some more creative options that would still accomplish the same thing. It would address the overcrowding at the elementary level while at the same time, perhaps being more efficient with the space we have in some of our existing buildings. Again, I believe what I am about to share from the discussions with the Facility Ad-Hoc Committee, we all agree this is the best recommendation we can make when you look at our situation as a whole. The earliest this plan would take place would be for the 24-25 school year, about 18 months from now. Based on enrollment projections, I believe it is more likely than not to happen in the 24-25 school year. So instead of redistricting, I recommend we change the grade bands in our schools. The ELC would remain at Harrison Street, however, our elementary buildings would become K through three. BWI would become a four-five building, and Big Walnut Middle School would house grades six through eight. This will allow us to free up about three to four classrooms in each elementary school while at the same time allow us to better utilize the space available at the middle school. This is the most cost-effective option we have. This will not solve our growth challenges forever, but will buy us some time. With the growth that is happening in our community and will continue to occur with the addition of Intel to our east, this will not be the last conversation we have like this. At some point, we will have to have serious discussions about how we are going to fund the repairs or renovations of the old Intermediate School at 105 Baughman Street or discuss building, additional buildings. But right now, we are not at that point. We are going to better utilize the space we have. Why do I believe we can wait until 24-25? Well, honestly, logistically, we can't pull it off in six months. From an enrollment standpoint, I believe we can make it work for one more year. Many of our elementary schools are running out of classroom space, but not seats. Let me explain. Our aspirational goal for class size at the elementary level is 25 students per class. So if we have 100 students in a particular grade at a particular building, technically, we have four teachers. If we have 76 students, we need four teachers. But we still have 24 seats available before we would have to add a teacher and add a classroom. BWI's current enrollment is 394 students, the highest it's been when you look at K through four enrollment at that building's history, recent history. GRE is currently at 339 students. In 2019-20, it was 539, so we're 200 under there. Souders is at 373. Its high was 374 in the 2021 school year. And P R E is at 470. Its high was 494 last school year. The most growth we are seeing will be feeding into GRE. Again, I am not saying we will be good forever, but I believe we can make it work for one more year before making the switch. Finally, I wanted to clarify something from last month's meeting. The board voted to amend the school calendar for the 23-24 school year by going from three staggered start days to two. We are still starting school at the same time. So half of our students will attend school on that Wednesday, while the other half will attend on Thursday, and all students will come to school on that Friday. But if you already have planned your vacations thinking there was only one day of school left, don't cancel them, it won't be the end of the world. We'll see you the following week. That concludes my report, and if you have any questions or comments, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Seeing no questions, we'll go to item number seven, Treasurer's Report. Darren?
As I indicated last month, the December financials were not ready yet, but you'll see that they are included in your packet for this month. With regard to the January financials, I think there's some things that I just want to draw your attention to. Mr. McLean began talking about how the district has changed over the years. If you look at page one of the January financial report, I think sometimes in looking back, we gain perspective. And it compares what things were in FY, are in FY '23 to what they were in FY '13. You'll notice that our general fund revenues in FY '13 were just over $29 million. As compared to today, they're $50 million. You will also note that our expenditures in FY '23 were just over $28 million. And our general fund expenditures in FY '23 are projected to be just over $48 million. So while we, in the Treasurer's Office, may not look at enrollment as much, we certainly look at revenue and expenditure data. And I think that's, that's pretty, pretty eye-opening to look at what the growth has been over the last 10-year period. The other item, another item I would like to draw your attention to is on page two with regard to total expenditures and total revenues with, and the variance between actual and projected. The difference in revenue is 0.7%, less than 1% variance, which on a budget our size, I think is pretty, pretty good. The other thing that I wanted to draw your attention to is expenditure data. And the difference there is 1%, but it's 1% on the good side. Our projections were over actuals by right at 1%. So that also gives you some comparison and some perspective. On page 13, with regard to income tax variance, we're within 1.83 or just, just over 1 and 3/4% of where, what we projected for this year. The other thing that is in my report that the board typically wants an update on is our public records requests. I began, began charting this data after the January 13th meeting, at which time there were four outstanding, and or to clarify, past public records requests, which were yet to be filled. Those have been filled at this time. I will honestly tell you that in the second item, the reason there's a disparity between the numerical figure and the word figure is simply because I first drafted this document last week and I updated it two days ago. And so as of two days ago, we had 15 new requests over the last 30 days. Since, between yesterday and today, we have received two more. All of those 15 have been dealt with and processed. So we have two outstanding public records requests as of today. I also think that it's worth noting that of the 15 that we received in this four-week period, from the period January 13th to February 16th, eight of the 15 came from a single individual. So that hopefully lends some perspective. Again, understanding that particularly large records requests, we, we have a process for a legal firm to review those requests and review the data sets that we get to make sure that they are, are processed appropriately. And with regard to redaction, they're the ones that do the redaction. So with regard to the four outstanding public records requests in item one, at this time, we have spent $6,800 processing those requests. And the total hours spent on processing the 15 between my office, the IT staff, and myself is about 30. So the other thing I will say is we have attempted to streamline the process and also increase the reporting validity of the process. If you would go to our district website, go to the Treasurer's website within the district website, you will find a direct link for public records requests. So when an individual is referred to that link, which we are doing now, they fill out a form, the form is time stamped and dated. It also appears on a spreadsheet-type document so that we have who the requister is, how they want the request dealt with, either electronically or paper, their email, and a copy of the specific request itself. So we took these measures to try to streamline the process, to make the process more accountable. And I, I think it certainly has helped. But the proof will be in the pudding moving forward. So that's, that's where we are with regard to item seven. Mr. Crowe, I'll entertain any questions the board may have.
Go ahead. So, Mr. Jenkins, real quick, and this is specifically with regards to our last meeting where you provided us an update on kind of the state of the finances and whatnot on some very specific issues, one of which was subpay. So the example of moving from what we were paying $100 to potentially moving to $150 has an impact on our bottom line. As you were talking about the increase in expenditures, and I just want to put on my glasses so I make sure I've got this correct. Our revenue increases from 10 years ago till now, it goes from about $29 million to $50 million. Our revenue, or I'm sorry, our expenditure, actual expenses go from about $28.2 to just under, or just over $48 million. So the one thing, I know you said you don't tie that directly to students, but I think it's important as we spend so much time talking about the fair funding formula to also acknowledge that there's been a student increase of about 37% in that same time. So even though we are receiving more funding, and that funding sounds like it's a large number, that funding is very much in line with the amount of students that we are also serving. Is that correct?
Well, I would, I would say it this way. I certainly agree with the, with the conclusions you draw with regard to our increased enrollment. The problem becomes, in this district, twofold. Number one, currently, we are on the state guarantee for funding. So, and to quite a degree. So even though we, our enrollment increases, we're not going to receive an increase in state funding.
Which was going to be my next point, because that burden still falls where?
Yes, and that's where I'm going. So you and I are on the same page with this regard. The, the burden for supporting and operating the Big Walnut School District falls squarely on the shoulders of the local taxpayer. And so, yes, I mean, while revenue and expenses have gone up, and particularly revenue, and, and those expensive expenses have gone up as a result of increased enrollment, what is also accurate is that the tax burden obviously has increased for our local taxpayer. But I can tell you, based upon current data and based upon our projections into the future, that scenario is not going to change. And so, you know, there are several districts in the state of Ohio
In this county?
levy cycles, right? We're not unique, but I think folks need to understand that we're, operationally, we're operating pretty leanly with regard to, especially with regard to administrators. Mr. McLean outlined your student ratios as the goal being 25, which as your chief fiscal officer, I applaud because state funding, you get funded on a 1 to 25 ratio, okay? I will also tell you that I know of schools, personally know of schools, that try to operate on a 1 to 15 ratio at the elementary and a 1 to 20 at the high school. And so their operational costs far exceed ours. So I think that's worth noting. I think that, you know, it's worth making sure that our public understands that, that they have an administrative team that is trying to operate this district as efficiently as possible while providing the best possible education for the community's children.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins, and that was the purpose of my question, so I appreciate that thorough response. I also imagine, Darren, that you've heard a couple of themes from me during your short tenure here in this district. But this next question is also a theme. I'm old enough to remember when we might get one or two FOIA requests a year. So from last month, if I understand your document correctly, to this month, you had initially said that there were 15 new requests, but as, and you sent this document out Monday or Tuesday.
Yeah.
And now we're up to 17.
Yes, and I'll be honest with you, I'm, if you ask me, I'm going to say 15 because there's two additional ones are going to go on next month's sheet because they're, they're left out.
They're past the time of this, right?
Yes, yeah, I just, and I just picked that cutoff as arbitrary, but yes.
So my, my conversation then, or my question is, is there a desire, or is there a need, or I don't even know how my board colleagues feel about this, to start spelling this out in a little bit more detail? It is incredibly helpful to me to hear the figure that is inclusive of the number of, the amount of time spent on this type of thing and the fact that, to your point about operating in a lean manner, we're, we're talking about real dollars that are starting to add up.
And I would, I would ask that, moving forward, we have this conversation again because I think what the board will be receiving moving forward is an even more detailed report than what you have
Okay.
based on the processes that we've put in place.
So, so, and there it is. So if somebody does want to make these types of requests, they go to bigwallnetlocalschools.net, surf to the district page, go to the Treasurer's site, scroll about 3/4 of the way down, and there is a form there that somebody can fill out electronically.
That's correct.
Thank you. And that is new from last month?
Yes.
Thank you. Those are my questions, thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
I had a couple of questions. So I was looking at the hour cost, which 30 hours, I mean, that's, that's a lot of time for the team. -for the team. But also the legal fees, you mentioned sixty-eight hundred dollars in legal fees. Is that to cover, I guess at the time, when I wrote my notes, it was thirteen, but fifteen as of this month and four, is that like spread across those nineteen? Or was that primarily like one or two?
It primarily was driven by the four requests that I referred to as being older, outdated, because honestly, those requests were so voluminous.
Those were the ones you talked about last month?
Yes. If, for example, if we have a request for a single document, the only time an expense involved is whatever time it takes for us to find the document locally, upload it, and send it to the individual. What we got, and one of the reasons, the main reason why we got behind on processing these things was because we had gotten multiple requests that involved thousands of emails. And what, honestly, what we do is our IT department processes the emails that are requested, puts them in a zip drive, gives them to me, I upload that zip drive to our legal team. From there, they analyze first whether or not there are duplicate emails within that zip drive. And then they review each one of those emails individually, personally, that's why it takes so much time. It is labor-intensive, it is cost-intensive. And when reviewing, they review it for data that, items that need to be redacted, that are personally identifiable. And so that's why it took so long. And I can tell you, on a couple of them, quite honestly, in my conversations with our legal team, they were using everyone in the education division to process this as promptly as they could, because they knew that it was time-sensitive for us. And, you know, all of those folks have other responsibilities. So some people, honestly, were working on Saturdays, some after work. And so I feel like we were very fortunate to get those items processed in as timely a manner as possible. And while I cannot tell you what the final cost will be until I receive all of the invoices, so I, that's why I'm hedging what I'm gonna tell you, the sixty-eight hundred dollars was the amount of the first invoice. I will also tell you, I'm shocked that it was not more, given the amount of time that was spent. I was, I was concerned, Mr. McLean and I had this conversation, I think he shared my concern, that we were looking for fees in the tens of thousands of dollars. If that happens, obviously, I'll pass that information on, but as of today, the invoice was sixty-eight hundred.
Okay. But by next month, it could be in this?
Yes, it could be.
Okay. So I think this has been really helpful, to get this information over the, I feel like it's been coming for, I don't know, six to nine months now or so. I think it's been helpful. And hopefully, the community appreciates that transparency as well. I think it's kind of eye-opening to people, especially when you talk about the difference between, you know, a couple of years ago to this year. I know that some, some districts and some other governmental agencies post the statistics related to these requests on their website. Have we ever considered doing that, or is that something that we would?
The short answer to your question is, yes, we have considered that. Honestly, the reason we haven't done so at this time are two, is twofold. Number one, we wanted to allow this new process time to get up and running and be fully implemented. The second thing is, I think administratively, we're looking at reviewing and editing and making changes to our website, generally speaking, with regard to its functionality and some other things. And so we really were hesitant to add much that was new before we revamped the entire thing. But yes, we have talked about it. I will tell you that I don't, it would be my belief that that would be something that we would discuss collectively, but we have discussed it administratively.
Thank you.
If that's all, then we'll move to item eight. Board members' items of interest. We'll start with-
Go ahead.
Okay, so this past Friday, the big one at high school, student council members, we got to visit to the middle school, and we got to present to them all about the high school, and we answered any questions they may have had about classes, or the layout of the school, what athletics are like here, and extracurricular opportunities that they have here. So that was a really great thing we got to do. We got to spend the whole day there, and it was really great seeing what the old high school looks like now, and just seeing some old teachers was really nice as well. Then, the eighth graders came to incoming freshman orientation on Monday night, and they got these really nice folders that had a bunch of information about their upcoming classes and how to schedule for next year. And so I'm very excited for those eighth graders, and although I won't be in school with them, I wish them the best of luck throughout high school. And then, soon, on February twenty-eighth, our juniors will be taking the ACT at the high school. And so I wish them the best of luck on the ACT. And I'm very grateful, because the freshmen, sophomores, and seniors get a nice day to catch up on any work that they have from home. So that was very nice as well. And then also, applications for the National Honor Society will be opening up here at the end of the month. And so eligibility for this is based off of important criteria, such as scholarship, leadership, service, and character. And then once these students are selected, we plan to have an induction ceremony here at the high school sometime in the spring. As for athletics, the game day competition cheer team competed at regionals recently, and we qualified for states. And for those of you who didn't know, the big one at high school is hosting states this year, March fourth and fifth. We do compete here on March fourth at four-thirty for anyone who may want to attend. Any crowd support is extremely helpful to us and is greatly appreciated. We're also in need of a lot of volunteers, so a great thing about this event is not only is it a fundraiser for our program, but also is providing a lot of service hours and opportunities for various students to come in, whether it's working in the concession stands or helping run the competition in general. I'm just very excited about it. I also wanted to congratulate our bowling team for earning their second consecutive OCC title. That is amazing. And then our diving team is having districts tonight, and I believe swim has districts on Saturday, so good luck to them as well. And then the wrestling team is currently having their senior night tonight over in our gymnasium, so good luck to them and congratulations to those seniors. And I know that our basketball team is playing Canal Winchester tomorrow, I think that's right. And so good luck to the varsity team as well. And as our springs, our winter sports are wrapping up, I just wanted to congratulate all of our sports on a wonderful season, and good luck to our spring sports teams as they are starting up as well. And at the end of January, four students from our FFA program participated in state finals for agricultural biotechnology, and this team placed first in state. So I wanted to congratulate them, and especially because FFA week is coming up next week, so we're excited to celebrate them. And then special shout-out to Maddie Jones for being the first-place individual overall at the state competition. Eagle Connection, formerly known as Best Buddies, had their February outing on Tuesday at the freshman and JV basketball games. The Key Club will be collecting hygiene items for their hygiene drive through February twenty-third. And then what's really cool is that our NHS and Leo Club is currently collaborating to start a paper recycling initiative. And so basically, the different members are collecting them every Wednesday and Friday, just to start that up here at the new high school, because we did have that at the old high school, but we're trying to implement that here as well. And then eventually, we're hoping to collaborate with some of the other classes, such as print shop and engineering classes, to eventually move on to more plastic recycling as well. The Leo Club also had a successful bake sale and candygram sale. And our Spanish Club recently had a well-attended celebration to commemorate Aldea de San Valentín. And just recently as well, our prom committee also finalized the top three teams for our upcoming prom on April twenty-second. And student council is currently working on either getting our spirit rock moved over to the new high school, or creating a new commemorative piece for a similar purpose here at the new high school. We also, on Tuesday, assembled and delivered our monthly meals, as well as donated some much-needed items to the Hope House in Columbus. And that is all I have for today, and I wanted to thank everyone for their time, and I hope you all have a wonderful rest of your week and get home safely today. Thank you.
Go ahead, Alice.
Mister President, fellow board members, Mr. McLean, Mr. Jenkins, and Ms. Ernst. We all place ourselves in danger to one degree or another when we stand up. However, we place our children and grandchildren in even greater danger when we don't stand up. Our kids are becoming entrenched in an increasingly pornified culture, a trend in culture and human behavior in which media, entertainment, advertising, fashion, pop culture, et cetera, is hyper-sexualized, resulting from the normalization of pornography. Pornography is very different today than when we were kids. Gone are the nearly quaint pictorials of naked and partially-dressed women that adorned magazines like Playboy. Type the word porn into Google, and you won't see anything that looks like the old pinups. Instead, you will be catapulted into a world of sexual cruelty and brutality, where women are subject to body-punishing sex and called vile names. Excessive use of pornography is harmful to sexual functioning and development for males and females of any age. A child or teen's exposure to violent or excessive pornography can change a child's brain, social interactions, and emotional skills well into their twenties. Pornography hurts individual families and society. Facing the epidemic of pornography use is not just for liberals or conservatives, nor can this problem be viewed through a narrow lens as a religious or feminist issue. Any more than poverty, teen pregnancy, or measles epidemic can be viewed as such. It is an issue that anyone who cares about children, including parents, educators, therapists, and community leaders, needs to be concerned about and willing to act on. The average age of exposure to pornography is eleven years old. A two thousand and ten study of fifty of the most popular adult videos found that eighty-eight percent contained scenes of physical aggression toward women, including but not limited to slapping, gagging, and spanking, with the primary target being women and the primary perpetrator being men. In a two thousand and nine study, forty-two percent of adolescents reported exposure to pornography online, with sixty-six percent of those teens describing such exposure as unwanted. Teens with early pornography exposure are significantly more likely to have sex at an earlier age, have oral sex, anal sex, and sex with multiple partners, engage in risky sexual behaviors, view women as sexual objects, and experience increased difficulty in developing intimate relationships with partners. I plead with you to consider what we are offering our students. The state of Ohio is fourth in the nation for sex trafficking. Big Walnut is four miles from the interstate. I think we need to think very seriously about what we are offering. Thank you.
Thank you, Alice. Sherry?
I didn't actually have anything prepared, but in, in hearing that, I found it interesting, the term epidemic. And maybe, I don't know, maybe I'm delusional, or maybe my perspective is out of line. But I actually have three teenagers right now. I have a freshman in college, a senior in high school, and a freshman in high school. And from my teenagers and the teenagers that I see and my kids interact with, I hear kids who are worried about their physics test and the club volleyball game, and, you know, the book that they have to read and the paper associated with it, and whatever teacher, you know, they're annoyed with today, and the lunch that they had at school, that, and I'm just, I'm just not seeing this big problem that we've started to hear about the last few months. And again, maybe I'm living in some kind of alternate reality, but I don't, I don't believe that this is the huge problem that it's being made out to be.
Angela?
I had the opportunity this past month, the privilege to meet with some of the administrators at most of the elementary schools. And I'd like to thank those principals who took the time to welcome me in, were very friendly, and show me what was happening at the schools. We toured a lot of the facilities, and I was able to sit down afterwards and talk to some of the principals about what they were most pleased with, and what their needs were. And in an elementary school, we might use it, the grows and the glows of what was going on. And one of them was the, the amount of kids in the classrooms and feeling a bit crowded. So I think what Ryan has come up with and the board, sounds like, you know, we're working towards that. And, you know, I had the privilege to be out with Amanda Stattler at Souders and sit down with her, and very heartfelt conversation with her. And I just wanna give her kudos for out there at Souders. We do not forget you, and she's doing an excellent job and really has a heart for the kids. So I wanna just give her a shout-out. And also, I got to sit with Mrs. Castiglione and watch her mirror or mentor with the teachers with the phonics programs they're, they're looking at. It was great to see that. And that gives me a segue into the other concerns in the elementary with the curriculum and our pursuit for a director of academic achievement. Myself and Alice, who are on the superintendent's committee, the curriculum committee, we had maybe the first of many wonderful meetings with Ryan, his openness, honesty to sit there and talk about his goals, his, his strategy, you know, just to get inside his brain, and what's, what we're all looking for collectively as a board for our director of academic achievement. So that was really nice. I also got to watch the ladies' last swim meet. That was really fun, over there watching that. And I had a special chance to talk to one of my daughter's friends, and she knows who she is. And we were just talking about the tough times that she's gone through. And she said, you know, I know I'm tough, I know I can get through this. And I said, you know, bring in the good to push out the bad. So I pray that that's what we can all work with in our own lives, and, you know, bring in the good to push out some of the darkness that's, you know, it is rough going through high school. And it was just a nice opportunity to meet, you know, talk to some of the kids out there and see the team. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Steve?
From last month to this month, I know that there's been several evening activities for our staff and our custodians. Primary things like parent-teacher conferences, Ms. Ernst referenced kind of the transition night for freshmen, incoming freshmen. So I want to say thanks to the staff for all of their work in that space. In addition, I want to say thanks to the transportation staff. Since we last met, they've really- Since we last met, they've really undertaken a whole new, uh, system of transportation, uh, focused on efficiency, uh, and getting students to school. Uh, I've heard from a couple of community members where the, the students have increased their transportation time into the building by about five to seven minutes, but for the most part, many of these routes were cut in half, so my, uh, commendation to Mister McLean and the Transportation Department. Additionally, very pleased to see the increase in substitute pay. Thanks to Mister McLean and Mister Jenkins for working on this. We have been talking about it for the better part of a semester, and to see actions being taken is, is, uh, positive to me. Recognize, as you said, Mister McLean, Deputy Snyder, and Officer Whiteside for their outstanding work. Think one thing that this board can certainly agree on is our desire to see a safer, uh, uh, school community, and certainly the partnerships that you articulated, uh, go leaps and bounds in that space. Um, I'm excited for the idea that next year we'll even add one more. School Counselor Week also transpired from last year, or from last meeting till this meeting. I wanna say thank you all of our school counselors for the great work they do. My students have had wonderful experiences with each of the counselors that they've been engaged with from elementary school. I also know that, uh, their work is kind of going into overdrive as we're looking at pushing out transcripts and all kinds of other things, even for Mister McLean's daughter. Military Appreciation Night was last Friday at the Big Walnut High School basketball game. Thank you to all the organizers of that. And then, uh, an unsung hero in this district, Mister Lynn Scott, in the back of the room, uh, put together a discussion for the community members on executive functioning, time management, how to help students kind of, uh, persevere, to your point, Miss Graziosi, uh, through their school day. I heard it was very well attended, and for any parent, that, actually, I heard there were eighty folks roughly in attendance, and while that may not seem like a lot in this auditorium, it certainly was more than could have filled up the, uh, more than could have filled up the previous location for it. So I wanna thank all of the community members that came out and, uh, took part in that. Mister Lynn Scott has also shared with me that the video from that evening and a lot of the discussion from just last night will be made available on the district website, so any parents who are unable to attend, uh, will be able to have a chance to view that. Uh, and then finally, I would echo the same commendations that Miss Ernst shared to the FFA team, all of the sporting teams. Special congratulations to the bowling team. Two straight years as an OCC champ is certainly no joke. Uh, and then finally, I think, Miss Ernst, you were a bit humble in your recognition of the cheer team as they qualified for state. Having gone to many of those competitions, there is no time where a gymnasium smells better than the time that a cheer competition occurs, so the fact that, uh, we'll be hosting that is positive, and that you are one of three, only three seniors on the cheer team that qualified for state, so congratulations to you. That's all I have, sir.
And I'll pass to keep the meeting flow going. I'll take, uh, item number ten, or, excuse me, nine, public participation. Do we have anybody that would like to speak, Darren?
We have, uh, four folks that have, uh, turned in a slip, uh, to address the board this evening. Uh, the first individual, um, and sir, if I mispronounce your last name, I apologize, I'm having trouble reading your writing candidly. Uh, Michael Wagener?
All right. Michael Wagener, I'm reading comments for Leanna Lee. It was disappointing to hear that two members of this board refused to join the Ohio School Boards Association, but instead advocated for membership in the National School Board Leadership Council. OSBA is a nonpartisan organization comprised of more than seven hundred school boards and thirty-five hundred elected and appointed members who represent Ohio's public school districts. While OSBA supports and promotes public education, it only takes a quick search of the NSBLC website to realize this organization, organization does not. Almost every one of the speakers at the twenty-twenty-two NSBLC Summit focused on culture war issues rather than real issues facing districts like Big, Big Walnut. One of the issues that may be the biggest cause for concern is NSBLC's vision statement regarding learning disabled, mentally handicapped, and special needs. NSBLC's website reads, "Students who are learning challenged can consume a lot of teachers' time and resources. This means less time for students that are not learning challenged. This fact provides less-than-ideal outcomes for both the learning challenged and those that are not ch- learning challenged," excuse me. "By providing special teachers and exclusive classes in schools for the learning challenge, we open up the path to succeed for both groups. Inclusion works, and it matters to these special-needs students. The idea that an organization would promote segregated classes in schools for these students is absurd. When they say exclusive, they mean to exclude these students. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act is a federal law that gives students with disabilities the right to a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. That is what, that is with as many of their non-disabled peers as possible. If the general education classroom works, then that's where they may be with the assistance of an intervention," told to use small words, "intervention specialist. If they need a resource room or an ED or MD room, those services are offered. These discussions are made by, these decisions are made by education professionals in conjunction with parents and guardians. To have a national organization advocate that we separate some of our most vulnerable students from the general student population and violate federal law is only one example of how this organization certainly does not have the best interest of all students in mind. I know Miss Nix and Miss Graziosi used campaign funds to pay for their memberships in this group this past year. The concern and care you express for our Big Walnut students rings hollow when you align yourselves with organizations like this that espel such non-inclusive views. I certainly do not want our community's tax dollars to pay for membership in such a divisive organization. Thank you."
Next, we have Linda Wagner.
Good evening. Words are powerful. Words form our stories, the foundation of our communication. Even the Bible discusses the power of words. Throughout Proverbs, there are references to the power of words, recognizing that they have both the power to destroy and the power to build. Imagine a child who is describing to their, describing their peers to an adult and using words that are outside of accepted meaning. It is likely that that child would be asked to amend their terminology and help to rephrase using more precise terms. The adult might explain that by using inaccurate terms, the situation could be inflated and emotions invoked. If the terms the child is using are considered to be derogatory, the discussion would likely include name-calling, a form of bullying. Those of us following the meetings of this board have been treated to the misuse of many terms, including pornography, pedophile, and sex trafficking. The use of these terms often does not resemble the actual definitions of these words and appears to be being employed for a specific purpose, to evoke an emotional rather than a reasoned response. This is heartbreaking because, as Alice pointed out, the overuse and inaccurate use of these terms can desensitize people to the horrific acts that they actually describe. We as adults should not be throwing around words in a manner that does not reflect their true definition and does not represent a factual and research description of an event. In doing so, we are modeling behavior that we would not condone in a younger population. Respect is also a frequently bantered-about term during these meetings. According to Merriam-Webster, the verb is, "Respect is to consider worthy of high regard." This suggests that respect is not something to be demanded, rather, it is something that is earned and can be lost. Through frequent use of inaccurate words, I would agree that respect is wavering. As is evident from participation at recent meetings, the students are watching us. Students expect to see reasoned adults who use words as they are meant to be used and do not resort to bullying tactics. Let's show them how the Big Walnut community works together to solve real issues that impact the district, not magnify issues that are being handed to us by national organizations. Let's use our words to build stronger public education, not destroy what has already been achieved. Thank you.
Next, we have Kim Banaz. Kim, I'm sorry. Oh, it's you, yeah, you're back again. I'm sorry. I screwed it up a second time.
I'm waiting for the timer. Just go ahead, okay. Well, well, first of all, I want to applaud, um, any and all efforts to deal with the growing student population and dealing with the issues that we have, finance and, and the structure of our, of our schools, um, facilities right now. I really applaud that, applaud that from all of you guys. I'm not, I'm new to the meetings here at these, um, at the Big Walnut, um, Board of Education, but I'm not new to meetings. I'm not new, new to meetings as a leader, and I know that as a leader, there is a high responsibility, not only to do what's best for the organization and the people you represent, but there's a responsibility in the words that you use. There's a responsibility to distinguish when you're speaking as an opinion and when you're speaking as a fact. There's a responsibility when you're speaking, um, about facts to do it in its full context and in its con-, um, and, 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 and all the facts together. That's one of the differences between when we stand up here at the lectern and when you all speak. So if somebody comes up here and says that they were aroused by a book not intending to arouse, that's their issue. That's their opinion, just like a person might claim that they were aroused by a nineteen-eighty-two Sears catalog underwear section or a picture in a National Geographic. When you sit up there and say you aroused, that's your opinion, that's fine, but when you go that extra step and say, and don't say you weren't, now you're crossing the line. You're saying that your opinion is a fact that applies to everybody, and if they disagree with you, they're lying. It's one thing for somebody to come up here and say, "My daughter's friends read a book, and it turned them bisexual," but without the full context of why they're bisexual or if they're actually bisexual, it's a limited argument. If you sit up there and say, "I was dumpster diving at the middle school, and I found four books," and that equates to book banning, it's a limited argument. It's actually a, a, a logical fallacy. Logical fallacies have no place in education. Another logical fallacy is saying that since the publication of a book, suicide rates have increased sixty percent. And even though in press you agreed that there was no causation, and you weren't saying that there was causation, you basically said it, and the old, "I'm not saying, I'm just saying," you know, it's, it's, it's not a good out. If anything, it's an admission that what you're saying is refutable, but you're gonna say it anyway. And a person can come up here and say that, uh, a book like Looking for Alaska's Pornography are obscene, but it doesn't meet the legal definition of it, because if it did, all they'd have to do is call the police, class would be shut down, teacher would be arrested, but it hasn't happened. And if you're gonna stretch the, the, um, the definition of obscene or, or, um, or pornography and state that it is actually part of the Ohio Revised Code, and I think what you might be referring to is Section two-nine-oh-seven-point-three-two-one, which does state, "It is illegal to create, promote, produce, procure, or possess any obscene material that has a minor or impaired person as one of its, um, participants," then you should also include the second part, which says that if it, the, the material is used for a legitimate purpose, it includes professions such as teachers, librarians, for a bona fide reason, then that section saying that it is illegal does not apply. So your vo- your voice carries weight, but also carries responsibility, and as a, as a Big Walnut community, we should expect that. Thank you.
Next, we have Taylor Thompson.
Good evening. I've attended the past few meetings, and one major topic that has been brushed aside is the issues with the high school, such as a suspicious lime-grain liquid leaking from the ceiling, the janitor's not cleaning the classroom, lack of transportation, lack of subs, et cetera. Another thing that has come to my attention is the Big Walnut community as a whole. The Facebook pages have been filled with nonstop hate and fighting on both ends. Quite frankly, it is childish and deeply upsetting to see a community that's supposed to be equal fighting over the more insignificant issues when we have more significant ones that need our attention. In these various Facebook boards, post communities, and pages, I am seeing many personal undertones. Now, I am in no way telling people that they cannot express their beliefs, however, this is a public school. Under no circumstances should politics, religion, or sexual preference be targeted or taught. If you wish for your children to have an education that has specific moral or targeted focus, then choose a private school that fits best for you and your family. If you're happy with the quality of education at Big Walnut but still want your kids to have a certain political, religious, or political upbringing, then teach them those values at home. Raise them to help support, raise them and help support them to uphold values in school and in the real world. It's about balance. Finally, if you want your child to believe certain things about the LGBTQ community, once again, teach them outside of school. For all of the above, teach it to your child only. The point of public school is that everyone is free to be their own individual person, and to attempt to impose those personal values with these undertones in a public school is both morally and ethically wrong. Please consider the issues directly pertaining to the education and function of our district that I brought up earlier. These are, these larger issues are the ones that require your focus, not debating over books. Each school board meeting, on average, from August to January, has an estimated three hours spent discussing Looking for Alaska, Speak, and many other books. In three hours, I've researched and wrote this speech. In three hours, I could have a very enlightening discussion about the socioeconomic issues here, but instead we find ourselves arguing about a book for Honors English Ten. This brings me to the school board as a whole. Many candidates who have run did so with political undertones or agendas, with things being said like, and I quote, "Keep these liberalist ideas out of our school," in articles being quoted from Linda Harvey, regular, a regular contributor to conservative views news sites. No matter what your political beliefs are, this should not be a building block of school board education. As a student, I feel pressured and scared for the future of Big Walnut and what will become if activities such as these continue to occur. And on the note of politics, I leave you with this. We are not political pawns. We are students with voices and opinions. I cry that our voices be heard. I ask you to listen to every word I have stated today because they mean something to me, my peers, and my community. Thank you.
Mister Crowe, that concludes all those who have registered to speak.
Thank you, Darren. That'll take us to item ten, business items. Ten-one, it is recommended the board approve the FY twenty-twenty-three alternative tax budget information to be submitted to the county auditor.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? When you're ready, Darren.
Mister Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mister Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Miss Ernst?
Yes.
Ten-point-two, it is recommended the board approve the twenty-twenty-two tax rates for taxes collected in twenty-twenty-three and estimated revenue.
So moved.
Second.
When you're ready, Darren.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mister Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mister Crowe?
Yes. Ten-point-three, it is recommended the board approve the following Big Walnut preschool and kindergarten tuition fees for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. Preschool tuition, two hundred dollars per month for nine months, September through May. Kindergarten full-day tuition, two hundred dollars per month for nine months, September through May.
So moved.
Second.
When you're ready, Darren.
Mister Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mister Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Ten-point-four, it is recommended the board approve the attached memorandum of understanding between the, between the city of Sunbury and the Big Walnut Local School District effective February one, twenty-twenty-three for the SRO full-time.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graziosi?
Yes.
Mister Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mister Fuji?
Yes.
Miss Ernst?
Ten-point-five, it is recommended the board approve adding the attached new activity account bud- budget, excuse me.
So moved.
Second.
10.5, it is recommended the board approve adding the attached new activity account budget, excuse me.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
10.6, it is recommended that the board approve the attached Board of Revision Appeal.
So moved. Second.
Any questions on that? When you're ready, Darren.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
10.7, it is recommended the board approve the personal property auction sale agreement between United Country Real Estate and Auction Services LLC and Big Walnut Local School District.
So moved.
Second.
This is material that's currently being housed in the transportation garage?
That's correct.
I did have a question on that. Did you have a bus in there somewhere?
I believe there is going to be a bus in there that's instead of salvaging to see if there's a bidder.
Well, under, under the agreement, there's no reserve, so it's whatever we're going to get for it. Have you had any time, I'm sure you haven't since we looked at it, to evaluate any of the restaurant equipment?
I have not determined if any of it's functioning. I'm going to say if it's been sitting there for seven years, I don't know that I want to put it in one of our kitchens.
And that, that was going to be my question, like, it's been there for a minute.
Yeah, I mean, if, so we, we've been, just for public knowledge, if you've ever seen the reality show Hoarders, that's probably the best way I can describe it, just desks, chairs, you name it, has been stored over at Transportation. There, there was stuff there from, from the, my first go around at Big Walnut, and it's still sitting there. So we, we're going to give it one more go, go through to, if there's things worth saving, we will pull, but we're, and Mr. Crowell, you and I, I think we came to an agreement, we're not going to save junk. If it's useful, we'll save it, but if it's a desk that's chipped away and rusting away and screws are poking out, we're, we're not going to save those items.
I think, Mr. Crowell, is your question in reference to 3B, the fact that it's an absolute auction? So whatever goes, is your question in reference to item 3, subparagraph B, where it talks about it being an absolute auction, so whatever the price is that comes in is whatever they get?
Yeah, and not knowing what's on the list. Is there just one school bus?
I believe so, but it's not one that is currently being used.
So I'll be honest, Mr. McLean, when I read that, I thought chairs for school buses, the, the item actually says restaurant equipment, desks, file cabinets, chairs, school buses, there's no punctuation matters, right? So I didn't, I thought that that was in reference to benches that are on school buses. I didn't realize it was an actual school bus.
Yeah, I think, I think there should be a comma.
My only caution on it is you are going to go through the stuff and evaluate it, whether it has some value or zero value. That's all I was questioning. Any other questions? At your leisure, Darren.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
Takes us to 10.8, it is recommended the board approve the M-class testing materials.
So moved. Second. Mr. McLean, could you speak about this?
Yeah, so we're, we're bringing this to your, for your approval because it's a curriculum item, not necessarily bringing it to you because of the cost. So this will be for our K through 3 students, I believe. We do testing with, I believe, K through 8. We use STAR testing in reading and math. And that, we, we normally give that three times a year. Some students do it on a more ongoing basis for us to assess their progress if they've been kind of flagged as a concern. There's a, there's been a new dyslexia law in Ohio, and part of that dyslexia law is you have to give a screener to all students at the early elementary level. STAR, we were just notified, is not an approved vendor by the Ohio Department of Education. However, we were looking at making a change before we were notified of that. We just, we, we were looking for a different option that was going to give us a different set of data that we, our teachers and our principals felt would be more beneficial to the students and their learning needs. So this was thoroughly researched by our team, and the recommendation was to use this, again, at the early elementary level, and that's why we're, we're asking for your approval here, because it's curriculum related.
I appreciated your feedback from your superintendent update this weekend. It certainly allowed me to, very clarified and allowed me to do a little bit of looking. I was surprised that STAR wasn't approved.
Any other discussion? When you're ready, Darren.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
That'll take us to item 11, Human Resources. All HR items are pending receipt of successful background checks, verification of experience and completion of all necessary documentation. 11-1, it is recommended the board accept the following resignations. Mark in-show maintenance worker effective January 15 of 2023, pending approval as part-time district custodian. Patricia Clausen, preschool teaching assistant at the ELC, effective at the end of the day on February 3, 2023. Doug Schwartz, director of facilities, effective at the end of the day on February 10 of 2023. Damarie Bolin, food service worker, effective at the end of the day on February 28 of 2023. Quinn Thomas, social studies teacher, Big Walnut High School, effective at the end of the day, end of the 2022-23 school year, excuse me. And Laura Morgan, teaching assistant, Big Walnut Intermediate School, effective at the end of the day, February 28, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you for your service. I do have a question, Mr. McLean. The, is the process or is the expectation still that all of these employees, whether retroactively or in the future, will be given an exit or transition interview?
Yes. That is, that is correct, and, and one of these individuals has requested an exit interview.
So one specifically has requested it, but regardless of request?
Correct, but one made it a point that they wanted to make sure we were aware of their thoughts.
Thank you. And then, at what point, then, is that data kind of harvested? Is that, I would assume there's a couple of times throughout the next year, as this is a new process for us, that we'll become aware of, kind of the meta findings of this, like the overarching themes or something along those lines?
Yeah, as we, as we conduct these, we're obviously looking to see if there's trends that we don't want to wait, if there's things that we can fix that is causing people to leave, if, if that's the case. But then, obviously, at the end of each, each school year, when we've, most of these retirements and resignations take place at the end of the school year, so that's when we'll have a more complete list and can dive into that data.
Thank you.
The last one on that list, is that the same Laura Morgan that we approved for hire in December?
I believe so, yes.
That's a pretty short stint.
I, I've said this publicly, I've said this privately, it's, it's never been more difficult to work in a school, whether you're a bus driver, a secretary, an educational assistant, a principal.
Or a superintendent.
It is, it has never been more difficult to work in a school than it is today.
Yes, she's the one that's requested the exit interview?
I'd rather not say her.
That's fine. When you're ready, Darren.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
11.2, it is recommended the board approve mark in-show Big Walnut ELC part-time second shift district custodian, five hours per day, Step 14, effective January 16, 2023. Current contract remains in effect.
So moved.
Second.
Is maintenance and custodian under the same contract?
Yeah, they're in the same classification, yes.
When you're ready, Darren.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
11.3, it is recommended the board approve the attached supplemental contracts for the 2023 spring athletic coaches.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Any discussion? When you're ready, Darren.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
Item 11.4, it is recommended the board approve the following employment revisions. Jennifer Lawrence, from Big Walnut Middle School, teaching assistant, 190-day contract to ELC preschool assistant, 156-day contract, effective February 6, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
When you're ready, Darren.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
11.5, it is recommended the board approve a one-year contract for the 2022-23 school year for the following. Kimberly Long, Spanish teacher at the Big Walnut High School, BA Step 2, effective January 26, 2023. Mackenzie Duffy, intervention specialist, Souders, BA Step 1, effective February 2, 2023. Jacob Delight, teaching assistant, Big Walnut High School, Step 0, effective February 12, or 13, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
When you're ready, Darren.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
You need to read the next one.
11 points, oh, okay, 11.6, it is recommended the board approve the following unpaid leaves of absence, Gary Schubert, bus driver, effective beginning at the end of the day on January 17, 2023, and lasting through the end of the 2022-2023 school year. Lucy Rupert, teaching assistant, Souders, effective beginning January 31 through March 13, 2023. Amanda Isganis, teaching assistant, BWHS, effective beginning February 13, 2023, through the end of the 22-23 school year. Heather McCoy, grade 5, BWIS, effective February 9 through February 17, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Vice President, I think we should handle these slightly separately. I move to amend the agenda so as to make Amanda Isganitis a separate item under unpaid leave of absence.
I would agree.
So are you seconding it?
I am seconding it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, so we will remove Amanda Isganis.
I think that actually has to go to a vote first.
To separate it out.
Give me a second. So, we have them. Okay. We ready? Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Abstain.
Ms. Ernst?
Abstain.
Okay, so I can go back and read the three, or just, I will list, this will be the vote on Gary Schubert, Lucy Rupert, Heather McCoy, for their unpaid leave absences.
Well done. When you're ready, Darren.
Okay, so, I need a motion in a second for that revised.
I so moved.
Second. Good point.
We have Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Abstain.
Okay, so I need a motion in a second for that revised. I so moved.
Second. Good point.
We have Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Abstain.
11.7, it is recommended the board approve.
Wait.
I think we have that.
This will be for the, we can add this, will it be 11.6 dot A or B? However you want to list it. This is the vote for, it is recommended the board approve the following unpaid leave of absence for Amanda Isganis, teaching assistant, BWHS, effective beginning February 13, 2023, through the end of the 2022-23 school year.
So moved.
Second.
So just to be certain, I have a motion by Mr. Fuji and a second by Mrs. Nix. Is that correct? For 11-6A. Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Abstain.
Ms. Ernst?
Abstain.
Okay, so just to be certain, I have a motion by Mr. Fuji and a second by Mrs. Nix.
So just to be certain, I have a motion by Mr. Fuji and a second by Mrs. Nix. Is that correct? For eleven six A. Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Abstain.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
And Ms. Ert?
Abstain.
Yes.
Sorry about that, Mr. Fuji.
It's quite all right, Mr. Jenkins.
I was not sure whether I called your name or not. Just to let you know, you voted in the affirmative on my computer, so.
Three times.
Yeah.
It's good that your computer and my voice match.
Eleven point seven. It is recommended the board approve a one-time salary correction for Linda Clampath, administrative assistant, administrative services to fifty-nine, five, six, nine, for compensation at a two-hundred-and-sixty-day contract, effective retroactively to July one of twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. McLean, again, for your clarification on your board update this past weekend.
And again, this is just to correct when, a few years ago, when she went from, I believe it was a two-hundred-and-twenty-day contract to a two-sixty, uh, her pay only reflected an increase to two-hundred-and-thirty-five days. So this is making that right for this school year. So we're, you're not approving an increase of fifty-nine thousand dollars. That's just what her new contract is. Uh, you're approving paying, paying her the difference of what she's owed.
Payroll correction.
Correct.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Ert?
Yes.
Eleven point eight. It is recommended the board increase the daily rate for substitute teachers from one hundred dollars per day to a hundred and fifty dollars per day, and the rate for the thirty-first, sixtieth consecutive days from one-oh-five per day to one-five-five per day.
So moved.
Effective beginning March one, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second. It's important to note that when we talk about this increase of fifty dollars, uh, to potentially fifty-five dollars for anybody who's doing consecutive days, that still does not place us at the highest. It places us, uh, at the average to a slightly above average, not yet at the highest across the county. Uh, I, I see it as both reasonable, responsible, and hopefully a little bit of a opportunity to fix, what I understand is a sub-s shortage in the area. So hopefully that will work to attract folks. How many days have you subbed in the classroom, Mr. McLean, this last, since last board meeting?
Uh, I, may, maybe once, just to, not for a full period, though. Just to relieve someone.
Yeah, that was actually an unfair question, I think.
But our, our principals have done it far more than that.
Yeah. And the fact that there's a sixty-seven percent increase in sub-s shortages based on the lies of data we are given from November, I think this is well warranted.
Any other debate? Darren?
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Ms. Ert?
Yes.
Item twelve, scheduling of the next board meeting. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be March sixteen, twenty twenty-three. As it stands now, it'll be six-thirty PM at the district office. Streaming will be made available on the district website.
So moved. Do we have to vote on this?
No. Thirteen, thirteen point one. It is recommended the board enter executive session to discuss details relative to the security arrangements and emergency procedures, or emergency response protocols for the Big, for the Board of Education, and to consider confidential information related to the marketing plans, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements with an applicant for economic development assistance or to negotiations with other political subs- subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance to consider the employment of a public employee or official and to confer with an attorney for the Board of Education concerning disputes involving the board that are the subject of pending or imminent court action.
So moved.
Second.
When you're ready, Darren.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh? I started with you. Sorry.
And we will take a five-to-ten-minute break before going into executive session.